I'd like to welcome everybody to Corey Valley Unified Union School District Board Meeting. Can we please stand and face the flag with a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to entertain a motion to approve approval of the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Mike has made the motion. Any additions or deletions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Moving on to general public comments. Okay, none on the video? Okay, moving on to consent agenda. Approval of minutes. Can I have a motion for the approval of minutes of August 14th, 2025?
I'll make the motion.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Moving on to approval of the warrants. Check warrant 567 dated 8/13/2025 for $111,910.73. Check warrant number 568 dated 8/13/2025 for $2,539.58. Check warrant number 570 dated 8/27/2025 for $482,601.46. Check warrant 571 dated 8/27/2025 for $6,160. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Mike has made the motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Moving on to personnel. Contract recommendations. I think we have them. They're only for informational purposes.
There's one professional.
Was there one professional?
Yeah, a school professional.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Do we say the names out loud?
Yes.
All right.
Dalton Jesse Cummins, Proctor High School Counselor. Do I have a motion to accept the contract recommendations?
So moved.
Okay, so motion's been made. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Can I just ask a question about the other ones where it says QV Sports Transportation Staff? I'm guessing that's just for a particular student since there's only one person listed for that. The expectation isn't that, okay?
So, as part of our collaboration with Poltony, we drive Poltony football players
Oh, that's what it is, okay.
down to Poltony and pick up soccer players and bring them back.
Okay, that's fine. I figured it was something.
And that will only run through the fall football soccer season.
Okay, it just threw me when it said QV and thinking, one person, how are they doing everything? Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to reports. Superintendent's report is informational only. Are you giving that for Chris tonight? No? It's in your packet. Moving on to principal reports. Who wants to start?
I can start. I, we've had a great start to the school year. We did have some power outages in Proctor today, which was a nice little blip on the radar for us, but we were able to like maintain and keep going for the rest of the day. I did include my continuous improvement plan linked into my board report. And then the fast bridge report should be in the drive if you have not received that. There is a link there. And then the only update I have on our capital maintenance plan is that we were supposed to replace two of our boilers and we kind of have that as like waiting and seeing what's going on with the greater consolidation. We're just going to keep kind of chugging along with what we have right now to not try to spend any money that we don't need to. And so we did not replace those, but we did replace the roof, so.
Okay. Well, it won't rain on you then.
Yes, it might still, but that's okay. But we have our buckets.
I guess we'll go in order. Yeah, I'm going to echo. We've had a great start to the school year. I think a little bit smoother than the start of this meeting. But, you know, that's
Notice.
No, no, you know that's not. My continuous improvement plan is also linked in my board report under practices. And the fast bridge data is included. Those have been included for all of you. And at this time, we have no large projects or purchases planned for capital improvement, nothing at this time.
Thank you.
Great. Proctor Elementary's been off to a really great start this year. Welcomed in some new staff and returning staff. Really great vibe. Kids are very happy. Lots of laughter, lots of really hard work already. My fast bridge is also in there as well as my school improvement plan. I did address two things in my board report for the capital maintenance fund. We are in a position where we can no longer wait for a new boiler. So we had a bid spec put together today actually by Lewis and that'll be going in the Rutland Herald. We are going to, you know, use it as long as we can, but we are in need of replacing it. And then we have been talking about regrading and repaving the school parking lot since I've arrived and it seems like even before then. So the intention is to put a bid out for the spring. Obviously, we are going to wait and see how everything else is continuing to move, but we are past the point of patching. So those two things will be coming.
Well, I'm going to go through line by line in excruciating detail.
No, thank you.
We've had a great start to the school year. Our two new classroom teachers have been wonderful. We have a number of new paraeducators as some have left and we've had to replace and we've gotten some new students. Both the fast bridge and my continuous improvement plan reports are in there. I can answer any questions about those. Just as FYI, all of us have our open houses either going on last week, this week. Those are coming and going as the days are here. And as far as some projects when it comes to capital projects, we had had some roof repair done earlier this year. Not a roof, the roof's actually in pretty good shape. I've mentioned that before. We're tracking down where the old building at the back of the cafeteria meets the new building that was done in 96. There's a spot that we're working on and a roof drain that we're trying to figure that out. The major electrical panel box that the board supported last year, this was all the power that comes in from GMP. That was all replaced in the spring. There was a major upgrade. Without that, we would have no power. Everything runs through there. We'd be, well, like the town of Proctor today.
Successfully completed the school day, mind you.
So, and we're not planning on, obviously, the mantra is we're not planning any big projects here. We've got, we replaced a furnace, I think, five years ago. There are two furnaces that work in tandem when it really gets cold. The furnace we replaced was the one that was leaking like a sieve. The new one, or the other one that we have is probably about 25 years old now, somewhere around there, 20, 25 years. It's going fine. We put a little love into it. And, you know, however things go in the next three or four years, that is something that will have to be considered. There's no doubt about it. When I met with our furnace folks the other day, they were in, obviously, we're all doing preventative maintenance right now. He's like, what about the other furnace? And I'm like, ah, we're on hold. Don't worry about it. Not even asking for it. So, but, you know, and lots of new kids, so it's always great to have the kids come in. Lots of very happy classrooms and it's nice, we have kids there all summer, but it's nice to have everybody back. It's not the same, so. Any questions I can answer?
Great.
I'm just echoing what everyone else said. We're off day 11. Great start. The sieve's in there as well as the fast bridge stuff. We don't have any major maintenance planning. Our boilers, seriously, our boilers, they're old, but they've been kept up. Sometimes the older ones are better than the newer ones. But, you know, like Jay, we have two of them and one's the backup if the main one doesn't come in, doesn't come on in the morning, so. But, other than that, I mean, just routine stuff that we're working on. I mean, the heating, heating guy was there first day of school working on a heater, so I felt bad for that teacher. Just kind of walked in like, oh, hey, I'm here. It's like, okay, great, yeah, August 28th, thank you. But everything was good. Working on that, so. Like I said, same as everyone else said, it's been great to have the kids back into the building. I always tell them, it's just a building until you guys get here and now it's a school again, so.
Needs that, the buildings need that energy.
Yep.
I did not include the actual estimate for the boiler, but we're looking about $75,000 to $80,000. They're not, no, but we've, just so you know, there has been a
But necessary. Necessary in the winter months, for sure. All right, moving on to old business, which we have none, so we're going to go right straight to new business. And we have Slate Valley Trails up to bat here.
So do you want us to come forward?
Yeah, if you could come forward, introduce yourselves. And is the PowerPoint presentation there?
You have a PowerPoint presentation?
Yeah.
It's in the
It's in the drive.
Yeah.
Yeah, in the drive.
I can't present it. Let me see. Let me try.
You can do it.
I can do it.
Where would you like us?
Wherever you're comfortable.
Wherever you're comfortable, yeah. Yep.
Well, I'm Nick Stark. I'm a board member of Slate Valley Trails and the Poltony downtown revitalization committee.
Yeah, I'm Courtney Venkin. I'm the director of Slate Valley Trails. I'm actually a former teacher, so 15 years educator. And then I moved here to take on this job. But thank you for all that you do. My dad was on the school board for many years when I was a kid. So appreciate your work. Thanks for having us. There it is.
Oh, yeah, great. Can everybody see it at home? Can you guys see it?
You could share it.
So background information while we're loading, SBT was established in 2015. So we're actually celebrating our 10th anniversary. And right at the beginning of that process, the core group of board members and landowners came together to try to figure out where we could put some trails, where there's already sort of existing energy. And there was this rail trail, I think it was called the River Rail Trail. And so we dumped some resources into that, but it's a three-mile loop right in the center of Poltony. It's super user-friendly and flat and it accesses the river at certain points. It's really beautiful. And actually goes through the elementary school property. So, any other background information?
No, just to paint a picture, it loops and utilizes the Delaware and Hudson Rail Trail for a portion of it and then it cuts off into the school property and then through the Norton Ave neighborhood over by the water treatment plant and then behind the college. So it's a very scenic route and it's, yeah, like Courtney said, like super accessible, very popular with folks just because it's, you know, you can do it in an hour and it's right downtown. And we'll tell you a bit more about some of the cool stuff we have planned for activating it downtown.
So you can go to the next slide. If you go one more. Yeah, so the big reason we're here too is we actually won an AARP KIDY Challenge Grant. And we decided we want to focus on the Poltony River Loop. We want to make some better wave lining. We want to make it more user-friendly, safer, easier to access. So that's where the funds are going to go.
Yeah, I've sent a few friends down it and they got mad at me because they couldn't find their way once they got to the elementary school, actually. So we recognized that there was a need for more blazes and just overall you are here signs and that sort of thing. So that's what that funding is really going to go for. Sorry, I'm getting complicated.
Yeah, we can go to the next one. So this sort of, this image shows off of the rail trail. There's access to, we call them the veterans' trails. They're right past that biker on the left-hand side. We realized that the area that goes accesses the elementary school, which is why we're talking to you all tonight, is really hard to navigate. So that's the part where we were trying to get permission from you all to reroute that and make it easier, a little bit safer as well. Anything else to add to that? So I'll let Nick, Nick is our mapping expert, so I'll let him explain the current route and the proposed route.
I mean, pretty self-explanatory here. Currently, it routes alongside the edge of the property and then behind the tennis courts. But we currently don't have any way of kind of navigating people through there because there's no infrastructure for us to put blazes on or anything like that.
Coming off Norton Avenue, right?
Right, yeah. And then we were thinking, what would be nice is utilizing the existing driveway that ends about there and then end of school, okay.
Lots of energy.
So there's the existing driveway there that has a lot of vertical poles and stuff like that where we can put blazes and signs. There's also already the gateway to the veterans' trails right there, which is a really nice split rail fence that was installed by volunteers like early on in the past few days.
There's a little kids' forest skills loop back there too, which is really neat.
And then in the, I should have made this a little bit bigger, but in the field out there too, we have like the tiny skills parks. So we have some like little ramps and
Obstacles.
Obstacles, yeah, for kids to sort of like get their bearings. And, yeah, that's
This wouldn't require like really any trail building or, so we're not talking about going out and like digging up the earth. We're just talking about really just signing it, which is really the post that we're bringing and rerouting it. It wouldn't go all the way around the field in the back anymore, which is where the vast trail
You would utilize the, like the driveway for the softball field and that sort of thing?
There might be actually there, yeah. So, yeah, you can see that's the driveway for the softball field already. And then we would just go down that little hill right there and then through the skills park that's already there. And there's already sort of the natural path there, so we could be following along that. Yeah?
Yeah.
I think, yes. So we've probably already talked about a lot of this already, but in the long route, especially in the snow, it's very hard to navigate. So being able to utilize the, I don't know if you'll plow the driveway in the winter or not, but it definitely gets a lot more foot traffic, so it's packed down and a bit more obvious. And then, yeah, lack of wave lining currently. And then for us too, it's like, I think the veterans' trails are kind of like a forgotten gem in a lot of ways. It's pretty incredible that we have that network so close to downtown and right off the rail trail. So we would love to like sort of highlight it more for the people that are just passing through that, hey, there's all these trails right next to town. So here, this might be a little brandyler for the meeting, but we can kind of like skip through these quickly. I just wanted to like give you guys a sense of what we had in mind for the type of signage and where we were thinking of placing it and stuff like that. It sounds like you all have a copy of this, so you can get a sense. So on the left is the current. We just have a blaze that's kind of being like this way. But we'd love to put an overview map so that people can orient themselves. And we have a couple of spots. This is a long driveway we thought would be a good place to add it as well. And here's right when you cross over onto the other side of the street as well. We just wanted to be very upfront and clear. Once you enter the school property, here's exactly where you're supposed to go. Whereas right now, it's just kind of like ahead in this direction.
And currently in our landowner agreement with you all, we have like that people do not access, shouldn't access the trail during school hours. That's something we wouldn't change unless that was something you'd be willing to do, but we would keep, it would be the same rules. Like we don't want people on school property during school time. And we would make sure to, of course, post that to let people know.
Here again. Oh, so this is something that we got approved by the village. We got permission to paint some blue dots on the sidewalks because especially when you're going to water treatment facility, you can very quickly, we don't have any posts to add blazes. So we're going to be painting just like foot wide, kind of like when you're in an airport or in a kids' museum and you're following the line. Same idea. And we thought that would be, you know, if you all are open to the reroute, we could add a couple on the edge of the driveway just so that people know, all right, I should probably stick over to this side, you know, meander over towards the door and So, yeah.
Yeah, just final considerations. Obviously, schools, like kids' safety, school safety is the number one priority. Right now, we don't see, we do see people using the trail, but it's not like hordes and masses of people that so, you know, one concern could be people drive, you know, the driveway and parking and people walking, but it really, from what we've seen, it's not like that many people accessing it and it wouldn't be during school hours. So we would want to make sure we minimize disruptions to school operations, of course. That's the number one priority for us. We really care about a trail user experience. Again, having it really well marked and really well signed is really important. And then, of course, working with you all. So we would work on a final landowner agreement and make sure everybody's happy with that. And of course, hopefully, like this gets us to communicate a little bit better. We try to do our best to communicate with all of our landowners, but this I see as a really good relationship building opportunity as well, so opening up that door and for conversations in the future.
I'll just piggyback off a few things you mentioned there. One is that we can explicitly state like no parking on the maps and stuff like that so that we're not encouraging people to use the school as a jumping off point, but we have dedicated spaces downtown, which is that economic development driver that we're really aiming for there. And then secondly, I can't remember. Sure it wasn't the super board, but
So do you have a, like, in our town, we have a couple of places where we have trails. And like on the rink, they have a big map to show the trails. So is that someplace downtown too that shows like a huge, oh, okay?
So we have, we got, we got permission to put a big kiosk actually right off of Main Street in the new restaurant, Green.
Peaceville Station, yeah.
So we're doing a big kiosk there, which has the big overview map, basically those little you are here Maps that Nick shared. We have a bigger version of that. So that's kind of like the jumping off point and then you would get on the loop. And so it's a pretty small section through the elementary school.
I remembered the second thing is that I am the secretary on the Delaware and Hudson Rail Trail Council and we
Oh, you used to do the trail counter?
Yeah, VTran just installed trail counters for us so we can provide that sort of data as well, which, you know, isn't going to give us very precise for the loop, but it'll give us an inkling of like, all right, are we talking hundreds? Are we talking thousands, you know?
Yeah.
Right, because there's a connector there.
Exactly.
So I think we should defer to the elementary school principal if she has comments or questions.
I mean, as long as the safety is considered, and that seems like that's your first consideration, you know, and we don't have that traffic down there during school hours.
Right.
That's the most important. Because trust me, if we look and we see anything, we're
Oh, yeah, distracted right away.
No, but we're calling and checking things.
I think it'd actually be better going down the road instead of going along the ball fields.
Yeah.
Especially this time of year and in the springtime with soccer and baseball and softball going on.
That's what we were thinking too. We actually just, we, SBT also just earned a AmeriCorps grant to hire a half, like a half-year, six-month youth coordinator. So we really want to start connecting with the schools. We've connected with the high school more. We had, like, we started an after-school bike club. We'd love to connect with you guys more and see how we could do some programming. And this would be maybe a part of that too, like having the kids going over to that skills loop and just
The mountain bike trail system is really nice, yeah. The kids would really enjoy it.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, is your grant different than the one the town has?
Yes, yep, yep.
I think, you know, we're not going to make a decision, obviously, tonight, but we'll add it to the agenda in October and
I have a question.
You have a question, sorry.
Separate from the grade school, the rail trail in the past, as we live on, has been monitored or monitored, I guess, by VAST. Is there any conflict there that's going to play into any of this?
No, I mean, we work with VAST on the River Loop as well. They build the bridges for the River Loop. So there's ongoing communication.
We have a partnership with those guys.
Okay, all right.
Yep. Yeah, they're great partners. They're definitely on board with the trails. And, yeah, their snowmobiles access a lot of the same trails that the mountain bikers go on as well.
And they utilize a lot of the, a lot of the state trail system?
Yeah, right.
Thank you. So it seems like it would be appropriate if we're discussing it at the October meeting if they provided a new landowner agreement.
I have a copy of that that I'll be able to give to, I think I sent it already to Chris.
Okay.
I will, I'll send it to all of you to review.
Okay.
And I'm sure it's something that our attorney would want to, we'd want our attorney to take a look at.
Well, we really appreciate the time. We know you're busy and have a million things to discuss, so thanks for everything and thanks for all that you do. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks. Now we're, now we're moving on to Visbit and VEH proxy. Do I have any nominations for Visbit?
Anybody? Who's attending? I'm not attending that.
You're not attending?
I don't know if Linda is.
Linda, are you attending?
No.
Okay.
Is anyone here signed up to attend? I mean, it's important. We have someone there. It's at a weird time for me, so I can't take, I'm off to go.
Yeah, I got
It's like on a thirst.
Got too much on my plate.
I'm trying to bring it up now.
I think we can, we can give our proxy to the SU people who are voting. I believe that's how. We could say like, like I think Eric and Colin are voting.
They're going, yeah.
And George is an alternate. And I believe you can give your, we can sign and make them our voters as well, I guess is how to say it.
Perfect.
So, I mean, if that's what the board wants to do.
So is that, is that a motion?
I would make a motion to give our Visbit and VEH proxy votes to the SU delegates to vote at the annual meeting.
Okay, a motion's on the floor. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So moved. All right, moving on to finance. Is Louis, no? Okay, so they're in your packet. Let's go on. We're going to move on to general public comments. Anybody? Nope. All right, future meeting dates, October 9th, 2025. And do we have any future agenda items?
I would just add that we have October 7th booked at West Rutland High School for the Act 73. And I think everybody received the email from Chris. If you have ways to share that out in your community in different kinds of social media or things like that, it's important to do that and get that link out. There's a QR code that you can share out with people that are interested but maybe can't attend. So that's important. Unfortunately, the information came out after our open house at the high school. I had suggested at the SU meeting that we attend open houses, but it was a short timeframe for Chris to get stuff together.
You did put the flyer out.
Yeah, no, I know, but I had said that I thought, you know, as board members, we could be there. But I think the information he provided, like the Q and A flyer like that is pretty cool and important.
Okay.
And, yeah, and I think the, you know, the people had said, you know, kind of what is the genesis of, you know, having the meeting? And it's not to, to make a decision about what we're doing, where we're going, if we're changing, holding hands with somebody else. The genesis of the meeting is to just get information out there for people that maybe aren't involved or in schools or even if you are involved in schools that don't really understand or know the kind of underlying what Act 73 looks like. The genesis of the meeting is to just get information out there for people that maybe aren't involved or in schools, or even if you are involved in schools, that don't really understand or know the kind of underlying what Act Seventy-three looks like. And I thought the, the information he put together to, to share out to people was pretty on, well, quite on point. I, I think it's, things are at the top of the question, so. So October seventh, it's from, starts at six o'clock, West Rutland Library, and it does have a remote option, so.
High school, it's not a school, I'm at the library.
Well, West Rutland High School.
High School Library, yeah.
Sorry.
If somebody shows up, it'll be pony big enough.
Then just go to the other library. I heard they have popcorn. All right, so no need for executive session, so do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion's made to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.